It is 6:09 PM and we are calling the meeting to order, the special meeting of September 30th, 2019. And may we have roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Here.
Councilmember Beckmeyer?
Here.
Councilmember Beer?
Here.
Mayor Protam Martin?
Here.
Mayor Vatalos?
Here. And salute to the flag led by Councilmember O'Neill.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a closed session report?
No.
Thank you. We're going to move on to consideration of the local coastal plan consultation draft and the proposed action is provide input on the local coastal program consultation draft and direct the city manager to submit the consultation draft to the Coastal Commission staff for review. And may we have the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Vatalos, Mayor Protam Martin, and Councilmembers, Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. I'll make brief introductory comments and then turn it over to the Senior Planner, Christian Murdock. We're very pleased to be at this point in this process. As the background to the report describes, we've been working on this very important program for a long time, many years, over a decade actually in totality. And what you have before you tonight is very important to understand that it's the consultation draft. This is not the final LCP. After tonight's session, the consultation draft, if directed by the council, will be submitted to the Coastal Commission for consult with them. And then following Coastal Commission comments, a draft will be prepared that goes then to public review. Following that public review and input, then there's additional public hearings for the Planning Commission as well as the City Council. And Senior Planner Murdock will run through the details of that schedule in his presentation. Another piece that I wanted to emphasize in what you have before you is an LCP, the local coastal plan, that since July, we've received over 90 comment packages from the public. And staff has done an incredible job at culling through all of those comments and putting in here, piecing together our professional recommendations that either incorporate some of those comments as well as the direction received from the Planning Commission and the City Council at the previous two joint study sessions, and where not incorporated explaining why that's the case, why that's not our professional recommendation. And lastly, I'd like to conclude with thanking the planning staff for all the intense work that they've done over the last really two years, but recently, in the last month and two, it's been pretty intense. So, thank you very much. Concludes my comments.
Thank you, Kevin. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Senior Planner, Christian Murdock. We're here this evening, of course, to discuss the red line version of the consultation draft of the local coastal program or LCP. The LCP is the long-range planning document for the coastal zone and is a companion document to the city's general plan. You can see on the slide here, the coastal zone is that subset of Pacifica west of Highway 1 in most cases, with the addition of the Shell Dance Nursery site to the east. The LCP focuses on the protection of coastal resources and coastal access while also allowing appropriate development of public and private property. The consultation draft is significant because it is the culmination of work started by the city in 2009 on a comprehensive update of the city's 1980 local coastal land use plan, which led to the 2014 draft, which was then put on hold, and the city's more recent effort in 2017 and 2018 to develop policies to address adaptation to sea level rise. The consultation draft is the first document to integrate the products from both of those efforts. The consultation draft is also significant because it will enable the city to begin consultation with the Coastal Commission staff on the contents of the city's LCP. State law requires consultation between the city and the Coastal Commission before adopting the LCP. Previous reviews by Coastal Commission staff have been on parts of the draft LCP only, but transmitting the consultation draft will enable review and comment on all of the proposed policies which will guide the city's actions within the coastal zone for the next 20 years or more. The consultation draft reflects an extensive public engagement process as well as feedback from the Planning Commission and City Council. More than 200 community members attended a series of five community meetings on the general plan, LCP, and Sharp Park specific plan this past summer. Dozens more attended two joint study sessions held by the City Council and Planning Commission in August and September. Staff also received, as Kevin mentioned, more than 90 public comment letters on the LCP since July of this year. Throughout all of the community's engagement on the LCP, two key themes have emerged: the land use designation of the undeveloped San Pedro Avenue site, known as the Calson Field and by other names, and ongoing discussion of the sea level rise adaptation planning process. As a result, the City Council requested this special meeting during the September 3 joint study session to allow a focused discussion of the draft LCP before authorizing the city manager to transmit it to the Coastal Commission. In the staff report, we've summarized the key issues expressed by the public in relation to these two themes and offered staff's assessment of each. Public comments on the San Pedro Avenue site tended to indicate concerns about neighborhood and resource impacts from future development on the site, suggested the site was too hazardous to develop, and suggested use of the site should be limited to temporary uses only without permanent development. The property owners commented that residential development up to 15 units per acre in a commercial mixed-use format should be allowable on the site. Staff's response indicated that while important, the types of hazard risks and potential impacts from development identified by the commenters would be most appropriately addressed during a project-level review when the particular mix of uses and the type and intensity of development have been specified. Staff has no information currently which would suggest the site is too hazardous to develop or that other potential impacts could not be mitigated. Staff believes the coastal residential mixed-use land use designation is an appropriate land use designation for the site because of the flexibility it provides and the types of uses which may be permitted at the site. The other theme relates to aspects of the city's sea level rise adaptation planning process, especially ongoing use of the cost-benefit analysis, proposed beach width maintenance standards, and use of the coastal vulnerability zone maps. The staff report explains how the cost-benefit analysis was a background study for use during development of potential adaptation strategies only. The city will not rely on the cost-benefit analysis for future project review, future LCP amendment, public infrastructure investment, or other purposes unless and until it is updated with the latest information when needed in the evaluation of a future decision. The 100-foot beach width standard contained in several sub-area policies is intended in part to help protect shoreline development such as seawalls and is a figure that may be adjusted based on additional analysis and over time with experience. And lastly, the coastal vulnerability zone maps are important tools for administration of the Transfer of Development Rights, or TDR, program, supported in the draft LCP, and help to focus site-specific hazard analysis only on those sites within the coastal zone with the potential to be affected by sea level rise. Staff acknowledges the maps may be updated periodically as sea level rise science advances and updates to the maps may change areas identified within the coastal vulnerability zones. Having considered all public comments and offered responses to the key themes which emerged, staff believes it is appropriate to continue with the LCP update process by transmitting the consultation draft to the Coastal Commission staff. This transmittal would begin a 30-day review process by Coastal Commission staff, which will result in written comments. Receipt of the Coastal Commission staff's written comments will enable the city to consider the comments and make any recommended changes to the consultation draft in response to them before scheduling public hearings with the Planning Commission and City Council for approval of the LCP. Staff expects to release an updated draft inclusive of any proposed changes to the consultation draft for a 30-day public review and comment period in late November. The public review period would conclude with staff considering public comments and making any additional edits to the consultation draft ahead of the first public hearing on adoption at the Planning Commission meeting in January of 2020. A City Council adoption hearing could occur as early as February 2020 based on this timeline. Following City Council adoption, staff would transmit the adopted LCP to the Coastal Commission for formal consideration for certification. The Coastal Commission could certify the LCP as early as May 2020. That concludes staff's remarks at this point, and we are happy and available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions? Not yet. Okay. Due to the number of people in the audience and the number of cards I have, would the council like to limit the comments to two minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
Except for him.
Comments will be limited to two minutes, and as I say every time, please try not to do too much repeating when you get up to the microphone, and I'm sure there'll be many more cards to come. So, we're starting with Tom Thompson, followed by Mark Steppart, and then Jeff Gueye.
property owner and taxpayer. The following steps are necessary to protect Pacifica homes, property owners, businesses, infrastructure, from both ocean erosion and the overreach of the California Coastal Commission. I urge you to adopt the red line amendments to the local coastal plan policies relating to sea level rise adaptation dated December 2018. I emailed you earlier today those red line recommended changes. And adopt the bright line statement of legislative intent. I also emailed that to you earlier today. And then direct the city staff to integrate both of those components, being the red line revisions and the bright line statement, and integrate those into the consultation draft. That's the 243-page Amendment A in today's agenda. And direct the staff to then submit the modified consolidation draft to the California Coastal Commission as the next step in developing an approval of Pacifica's local coastal plan. Thank you for your work to make Pacifica even better. It's much appreciated. Thanks.
Thank you. Mark Steppart, Jeff Gueye, Lisa, I know her.
Thank you. I have a few brief comments, one of which is, I support the red line 2018-12 adoption tonight. It's been discussed. And the bright line, you need a clear legislative intent. And the economic report's got to go away. This entire document, on its way to the Coastal Commission, is defective. There's unintended consequences. We are not going to understand for 10 to 15 years, and it's going to be subject to litigation. It's going to cause more problems than it's worth. The economic plan has been sent to the Coastal Commission already without your approval or adoption, and God knows what they're going to do with it. I'm sure they will take it as policy. I'm sure they're going to shoot it back at you. You're not done with this, so tonight it's time to say the economic plan is defective. Take it out of the report. There's other issues involved here. Quarterly reports have been generated to Coastal Commission. You haven't seen them. Transmission on the maps that morphed mysteriously from a year ago to managed retreat documentation to now a defense of shoreline protection. These are the things that your amendments tonight will address. And then finally, there's two additional items. Future meetings on staff reports and Coastal Commission comments over the holidays between Thanksgiving and Christmas are enormously burdensome. It's time to give us more time to digest this stuff and not keep holding meetings over three-day weekends, Thanksgiving, Christmas holidays, the end of the year. And then finally, it's time to be pro homeowner and do this right. This is a 30-year document. You're not going to get another bite on it because once you go to the Coastal Commission, it may come back two or three times. You're not done. This is probably eight months more work. But you're going to end up in court, and it's going to step all over the Beach Boulevard Hotel on this property and Main Street. And it's on your watch. Thank you.
Jeff Gueye, Lisa Velosin, Velosin, sorry, and Suzanne Drake.
Hello, honorable Councilmembers. My name is Jeff Gueye. I'm a 26-year resident of Pacifica in Fairway Park West. I appreciate the changes made in staff's red line consultative draft of the LCP, which includes statements throughout the document saying, "The city has considered but rejects managed retreat," and its renaming of the LCP hazard policies to coastal resiliency policies. Hopefully, that will appease some of our insurance companies. However, confusion remains about contradictory policies, the LCP document titles and references, and changes to the policy numbers. It is still unclear which documents comprise the LCP that will be forwarded to the Coastal Commission. It's also unclear which specific documents will be used by the Planning Department to make future decisions on building permits. The community submitted proposed red line changes to the 26-page local coastal plan policies relating to sea level rise adaptation, which included a total of 67 hazard policies. In response, staff produced a LCP consultative draft, which is 243 pages and contains 338 policies. How did that happen? We went from hazard policies 1 through 67 to a confusing alphabet soup of policy numbers. There is even confusion amongst staff about which documents comprise the LCP. The consultative draft refers to zoning ordinance, zoning district maps, and implementation plan, which we can't find, and we keep getting referred to the sea level rise adaptation website. The purpose of the changes we propose is to remove the conflicts and ambiguity which will tie the city up and developers for lawsuits for years to come. What will happen if Resora...
Your time's up. Thank you. Lisa, followed by Suzanne, and then Larry Bothan.
Good evening, Lisa Villasenor Velosin. It's even worse than you thought.
I know the first part.
Thank you all for all of the work you've done so far. I'm a lawyer, 30-year litigator. I get how much work has gone into this already. I'm a member of the San Francisco Mayor's Women's Golf Council, the San Francisco Golf Alliance. Play golf sometimes. It looks like that at Sharp Park. I think the important thing here is, I agree with all our prior speakers. I would like to see the red line draft adopted. This is pro-residence, pro-economic strength that Pacifica has. We have to preserve that. It's not just a golf course. It's our communities. It's our environmental issues. It's the frogs and the snakes. Everything deserves protection west of Highway 1 and the nursery. I would like to see the matters that were brought up in my letter to the Tribune dated September 25th and the Golf Alliance letter as well, which notes all of the details. So, thank you very much for your... And I was happy to hear it's not a final draft, even though it says final draft on the December 2018 LCP. Thanks.
Thank you. Suzanne, Larry, and then Cliff Lawrence.
Hi, Suzanne Drake here, Sharp Park resident. I agree with the former speakers. I think that they're right on the money. Adopt this red line LCP, I think, is a good idea. Additionally, one of the speakers indicated a confusion with regard to documents. I too am confused what is being sent to the California Coastal Commission, because I've been working on this quote-unquote "final draft" of this LCP that's listed online from December of 2018. However, Mr. Murdock this evening indicated it's a consultation draft. I've never seen this consultation draft. He repeated it several times. So, is it the final draft that's on the website that's like 30-something, 40-some pages? Or is it some other document? I mean, we're all getting a little confused by all these appendices and different things that are missing. You know, this is supposed to be transparent with the public, the people that are viewing from television right now. Why are there so many holes? So, that would be the first one, is it should be like spelled out super clear. Here are the following attachments. Here's what's going to the California Coastal Commission, and it should be like super clear. You shouldn't have to bury through it or call it a different name when it's actually called something else. It's a little screwy. Additionally, I don't know if we're addressing it, but Mr. Murdock did mention the 100-foot of beach that is indicated. Who's taking this measurement? If we have one king tide, you know it's less than 100 feet of beach. So, let's be real clear on all of these measurements and what we need to do for their town. Thank you.
Through the council, may I request that the staff explain the difference between the ESA document and the consultation document that's going to be sent to the Coastal Commission?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Be happy to attempt to address that important concern. The commenters, I think, when they talk about the 30-to-40-page document are referring to the December 2018 version of the hazard policies that the City Council directed to be incorporated into the draft LCP. That's what we're here to discuss this evening. That 30-to-40 pages of work, which primarily contained at that time hazard mitigation policies, have been repackaged and renamed in response to public comments as coastal resilience policies, have been placed in the new Chapter 6, Coastal Resilience, and a few other minor edits for consistency made in other places in the chapters 1 through 5 of the draft LCP, with comments included in the document to explain where those edits occurred. So, if someone's looking for the December 2018 work, the bulk of that is contained in Chapter 6 of this consultation draft, and a few other minor elements of that, as I mentioned, with comments to explain where they ended up, are located in chapters 1 through 5. As to what will be transmitted to the Coastal Commission, it's plain and simple. It's the contents of the consultation draft. What you see from page, you know, 1 to the end of this consultation draft document with the appendices and so forth is all that we're going to transmit. There are not other hidden documents, separate attachments that are not named. It's plain and simple in the attachment to this staff report tonight. If authorized by the council this evening, that is what the staff will be transmitting.
Thank you for clarification.
Good evening. My name is Larry Bothan. I live in Rockaway Beach. I stand here tonight to support the maximum defense of the shoreline of the Sharp Park and the West Fairway Park areas. It's inconceivable to me that there are some community members who would oppose this in favor of managed retreat policies, which would have a devastating impact on all of Pacifica. We're talking about some relatively inexpensive measures that can be made to build a proper seawall north of the pier and extend that seawall south of the pier to close the gap at the southern end of the golf course at the levee. Pacifica will not spend a dime on the levee. That's the responsibility of San Francisco. We all know that. That's been mandated by the Coastal Commission, so it won't cost us anything. These simple actions will protect the heart of the town, homes and businesses, the golf course, the trails, and the public recreation areas. Compare that to the cost of relocating millions of dollars' worth of infrastructure, sewer and water lines, gas, power, and telecommunications lines, Pacific Coast Highway, not to mention the cost of compensating all the property owners forced to take pennies on the dollar because we didn't do the obvious things to protect them. Of course, we don't know what all that would cost because the cost-benefit analysis didn't evaluate any of that. So, it's left to the people left on the high ground, holding the bag, to pay for all this. That's why I support the request made to council by the San Francisco Public Golf Association to remove the adaptation plan and the cost-benefit analysis. I believe that that and Jeff Galais' bright line statement and red line document amendments are the best course of action for all Pacificans. Thank you.
Thank you. Cliff Lawrence, followed by Cheryl Calson and Kim Scallon.
Hello. Cliff Lawrence from Fairmont, West Fairmont area. I've been concerned that when we say we reject managed retreat, that we don't allow for taking... We sound like to some people, we're not taking care of what we can take care of. I don't think that's what managed retreat means. So, I came here tonight because I know you have a tough job, and I thank you for volunteering for this job. It's a thankless one. But there are a lot of inconvenient truths that I know you have to deal with, and our hope is that you will look out for the higher interests of this community, the longer-term interests, and recognize that these inconvenient truths will have to be dealt with. We are not going to impose our will over nature. I thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl Calson, Kim Scallon, Nicole Calson.
I wanted to speak too. In the previous meetings, there was a discussion around, did we actually have a right to develop the property? And so, in the agenda packet, it's a letter on Coastal Commission stationary from James Muth, a coastal planner dated July 31, 1996, to Ron Calson. The first statement begins with, "This letter serves to confirm that the above-referenced property could be developed with commercial uses or mixed commercial residential development. We've been asking for a designation and density that supports the city housing goals, senior housing, assisted living, affordable housing, market-rate housing, and benefits the community with open space, coastal access, and parking. And the city and the owners can benefit economically." On page 2-8 of that, I think it's the housing document, for CRMU designation, it permits housing at a range of densities. We'd like to add uses such as senior housing, assisted living, affordable housing, and/or market-rate housing. This application process would be streamlined as recommended by the state, so there wouldn't be a need for a developer to apply for a zone change or apply for a non-permitted use. We strongly oppose the city downzoning further the density on our property to 3 to 5 units. In doing so, the city of Pacifica could potentially reduce the economic value of our property by greater than 75%. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim, followed by Nicole, and then Kristin Christensen.
Hello. My name is Kim Scallon. I am Ron Calson's daughter, and I'm a Belmont resident. We are facing a housing crisis, and affordable housing can be a part of the We are facing a housing crisis, and affordable housing can be a part of the solution. Many faced with this crisis would benefit from affordable housing, including seniors and/or disabled seniors. A permitted use could include senior housing and assisted living. As noted on page twenty-five of the City of Pacifica's Housing Element, 2015 through 2023, 4.8 on income, quote, "Shrinking purchasing power can pose a serious challenge for individuals and families seeking quality, affordable housing, especially in the expensive Bay Area housing market." And, quote, "More than two-thirds of seniors had incomes below the Pacifica median household income level in 2011. Lower incomes can present challenges to finding adequate, affordable housing for seniors, especially at market rate. Considering the growing proportion of Pacifica's population comprised by seniors, these figures demonstrate the importance of understanding housing needs of this key population segment. There are likely other segments of Pacifica's population, such as persons with disabilities, et cetera." Quote, "The 2010 U.S. Census found that twelve-point-one percent of Pacifica's population was sixty-five years or older, up from nine-point-seven percent in the 2000 census," end of quote. "And it is expected to grow due to the aging baby boom generation, lower birth rates, and extended life expectancies. A large proportion of disabled persons are also seniors. Forty-two percent of those with disabilities in Pacifica were aged sixty-five years or above in 2011. Yesterday, while speaking to people at the Fog Fest, we heard about concerns for increased traffic. Senior housing and assisted living would present less concern for increased traffic patterns at the property. Thank you for your consideration."
Nicole, Kristen, and then Ron.
Hi, my name is Nicole Calson, and when I was five years old, my dad, Ron Calson, bought what once was a rundown golf range from the Archdiocese of San Francisco. The community had no plans to make anything of value with this land, and there was no actual use within the community at that time. Today, twenty-three years later, I have a one-and-a-half-year-old daughter, and my family still owns this land, which is currently in much better shape than its original state when it was purchased due to my parents' efforts. I have followed community statements from ongoing Pacifica City Council meetings, and have gathered my own thoughts on this matter. We should not allow the vocal and self-interested few to hide behind climate change. Climate change is a real issue in our population, that our population is facing today. However, development of my family's land and its environmental impact is not this community's true concern. The community should support economic and communal growth in Pacifica. My dad has tried to work with the community, offering approximately one-third of the property in exchange for their support. I'm a San Mateo County resident, and a potential future property owner in Pacifica who actually cares about the growth of this community. I urge you to consider the future of young families like mine when making this decision. Thank you.
Kristen, Ron, and then Tim Callen.
Hi, my name is Kristen Christensen, I am Ron Calson's daughter, and we want to advocate for allowing this property to be affordable housing as a permitted use. There are people living and working in Pacifica and the greater peninsula area who may never be able to afford or buy a home on the peninsula or in the Bay Area as a whole due to the high cost of housing. In the Housing Element of the plan, it is noted on page twenty-five, the section on income, that shrinking purchasing power can pose a serious challenge for individuals and families seeking quality, affordable housing, especially in the expensive Bay Area housing market. Then on page twenty-six, the report notes that fourteen thousand sixty-one total households in Pacifica in 2011, forty-two percent overpaid for housing. So, people such as schoolteachers, restaurant employees, government employees, living in Pacifica or the greater area, do not make a high enough salary to obtain a loan in many cases. Each member of a household must be employed for a loan to be considered. Lack of affordable housing affects all of us, and most of our friends and family members. Such a plan to include affordable housing as a permitted use on this property could be, could still include a large area of open space and access to the beach on the east side of the parcel. I'd like to echo my sister's thoughts on affordable housing. I also have a young family who have been wandering around here, and it is very hard to raise kids in an area where you can't afford to own your own home, and you can barely afford rent. So, I really strongly urge you to consider affordable housing as a permitted use on this property. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Calson, Tim Callen, and Sam Casillas. Ron's first, then Tim.
Oh, I was waiting for him to step up. Forgot my glasses. I didn't quite catch all that was said earlier, because of my hearing, for one thing, but I think Kristen said something about the Housing Element, which is 2015, 2023. I think we're mentioning it once, that I recall, and there's a whole bunch of different properties in there that you can all look up and see that are all over town, I think there's about fifteen or twenty-five of them. And we were at one time in that bunch of properties, and we were at some point taken out of it. We were in, first time in Europe on vacation, and the meeting went on, and my daughter was here, and I think my son-in-law. And, but we were then notified, when we got back, that we weren't in the plan, we weren't in that Housing Group, and I couldn't understand that, because I talked to, I think it was Kathy Cresswell in the state, in California, and we were, at that time, included in that group. Well, I came back, and I found that we're in a group of seven, that's listed as properties that have some kind of possible damage to them, or environmental issue about them. And I don't know what the basis for that was, other than word of mouth from somebody else saying something, but I don't know if there was any kind of study or anything that was done at that point. So, I'd kind of like to get some feedback on that if I could, and maybe I just don't understand it, but this is probably my last time here, and I hope it is. And I thank you all for your time, and I hope that you will consider some of the things we've said. We think that the most, I was in real estate, the most compatible use for a shopping center and the surrounding hillside is that it be residential, whatever kind you decide to choose, it would work there. But that's just being honest, that's being straightforward, and that's being what it is. I was in the business for like thirty years, and I do know a little, and there's people on the council that are in real estate and know what I'm talking about, that's just not realistically other things, otherwise there'd been a whole lot of other people knocking on my door, because land today in California is hard to find, and the Bay Area is really hard to find. And land next to the ocean, it's an old golf driving range at one point, is a heck of a lot more land to be built on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim, Sam, and Jim Kramer.
Good evening. I didn't prepare my remarks, because to me, the issue is starkly clear, that last week, on Wednesday, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change released a new report, beyond the report that says we have eleven years to make radical worldwide changes regarding climate change and its contingent conditions, including sea level rise. And now they're, we released a report about oceans and the cryosphere, having to do with all the frozen water on the earth, and that in fact, it's accelerating surprisingly to them. Now, and here we are, like people on the Titanic, rearranging the deck furniture in Pacifica. There's the iceberg, there's the reports, it's all over the news, people are demonstrating, ocean communities are being inundated and losing their homes, and we're going to accede to a redlined LCP that is based entirely on the profits of a very few, and the concerns of the few. The city council was elected not to just dance with them that brought them, but it was elected to serve the greater interest and the good of the whole community. That includes the infrastructure along the beach, that includes the tax base, and the financial health of the whole community. We can't be held hostage to all these little niggling changes, which aren't niggling at all. They actually have the purpose of putting Pacificans, all Pacificans, on the hook for all that future development, because changing the definition from what it was nineteen-seventy-seven of an approved property, taking that out of the equation, and all these other changes, it's a disgusting capitulation to money instead of health.
Thank you, Tim. Sam, Jim Kramer, and Victor Carmichael.
Dear city officials, various groups of concerned Pacifica citizens, including those of the Pedro community, have attempted to engage the city and the Plan Department in dialogue that I believe could have clarified many of the errors in fact and judgment that continue to plague the LCP GPU process. At this point, it is apparent that the majority of our city council has decided to ignore science and the majority of its own citizens in an order to appease development interests. The city council is not only ignoring coastal conditions based on scientific data, but also willfully disregarding state regulations and coastal commission guidelines. Because of the deficiencies in both the sea level rise adaptation plan, and now the LCP, the city is not only in danger of the coastal commission's outright rejection of these plans, but we have to prepare for the real possibility of coastal commission taking control of the planning process. But frankly, because of the city officials being so compromised by real estate interests led by Sam Carr, at this time, I believe it is the best interest of the city, for the city, for the coastal commission to assume full control of the LCP planning process. The coastal commission needs to be aware that the city has willfully ignored science, government guidelines, and regulations. First of all, the sea level rise scenario, 5.7, they've already commented that the southern area is outlined by the coastal commission to the city's draft response, that ignore long-term sea level rise planning. Also, the guidelines for the city in section 3022 states, "The use of private land suitable for visitors serving commercial recreational facilities designed to enhance public opportunities for coastal recreation shall have priority over private residential." What do you think's going to happen? Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Kramer, Victor Carmichael, and Richard Harris.
Good evening. I live in the Sharp Park District. I served on the community working group. Many people worked hard over a long time to improve the documents that are the basis of the consultation draft. Throughout that process, I saw substantial compromise reaching the approved SLR LCP draft. For example, in reference to managed retreat, that draft adroitly avoided the inflammatory use of this term by linking all adaptation options to observable triggers, and ensuring that managed retreat would never be forced on private owners. So, most of the fear about this word is unfounded, even paranoid. Happily, this is reflected in the staff's Agenda Summary Report of some new wording on Packet Page Nine, but other changes in the document seem to give in to this misguided fear. I remind you that beaches are public trust assets. Protection of property rights should be an important theme, that's the quote from the document, should be an important theme, but it should not assume an unbalanced dominance. Protection should not be limited to rights that benefit some property owners, or even to the whole city. Certainly, rights valuing the beaches benefit more people overall, and are at least equally important. We know that this is a legal concern of the Coastal Commission. Our consultation draft should not ignore or minimize these wider public interests. I accept the wording of coastal vulnerability zone for hazard zone, but replacing a risk-related word with coastal policies, as in Section 6.5, is vague, evasive, and disingenuous. It's unseemly and appears as though we're hiding our heads in the sand to placate some extreme critics. Please keep an informed tone of directness. Of great concern is a suggestion that an amendment to the full LCP be required to even consider certain specific adaptation responses in the future. Our long-term planning must not constrain timely reactions to the unexpected. I hope that's not considered seriously. Thank you for your hard work on this.
Thank you. Victor, Richard Harris.
Hi, I'm going to be somewhat supportive of the staff's work. Pacifica, like it or not, has become a national symbol for coastal erosion. Articles on sea level rise inevitably feature graphic shots of Pacifica being pummeled by the ocean. With many miles of highly populated coastline, the state of California has a problem, is in the crosshairs of sea level rise, and the coastal commission has inherited the responsibility of dealing with this issue. Unfortunately, real estate interests have riled up the public to a fever pitch in this town. Since beach armoring is expensive and has been futile, is ultimately futile, the call to consultants included managed retreat as an option. The concept has been vilified and demonized endlessly. Bending to the will of a vocal subset of the public, the draft version of the local coastal plan update now has the term almost entirely scrubbed from the document. This weakens the effectiveness of the tool. Fortunately, the version, as it stands tonight, retains some important elements. The mention of managed retreat did survive. Managed retreat, page 615, it says managed retreat would be reconsidered if feasibility and monitoring warranted. Secondly, requires non-conforming structures in the shoreline area when expanded or developed to conform with the new LCP. Finally, it prohibits, I don't know finally, but another good element is it prohibits building permits approval, building permit approval if the project involves any shoreline protection structures, so there's no more rock dumping responsibilities by homeowners. The underlying issue is whether the building in the coastal zone, which is much like building in a floodplain or barrier island, which are now increasingly look like ground zero, makes any sense. Maintenance of seawalls and.
Thank you, that's it. Thank you. Richard Harris, Gina Zari, Cindy Abbott.
Evening, council and staff, and thank you for your work on this. I'm Richard Harris, I'm with the San Francisco Public Golf Alliance, and we've sent you a letter on Thursday, it's not in the Packet, did it get into your consideration? And if not, I have copies. There has been explanation both in the summary report that you've received, and also in the consultation draft memorandum that you've received, that says that the, that limits the language of the cost-benefit analysis and of the adaptation plan. That language needs to be in the policy itself. The way the policy itself is written, it says, "The adaptation plan, which would include all subparts, shall be implemented." That needs to be, and then that is attached to your policy. The policy on its face needs to say what was said by your city manager, that this was preliminary document, and informational and background document, and which was said in both the summary report and the consultation draft. There's language in that that says it's.
Thank you. Your time's up. Gina Zari, Cindy Abbott, Joanne Gold.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. We've been dealing with this issue of managed retreat for over two years, maybe three years at this point, and I've created a coalition of nearly a thousand people in Pacifica who feel very strongly about managed retreat, and about the advancement of managed retreat prior to when it's necessary, and that's what I want to speak to right now. Managed retreat is going to be necessary in certain places, and I am not, nor will others deny that. Shelter Cove is an example of where it is reasonable for managed retreat. However, there are other areas where this is a premature conversation, years ahead of schedule, decades ahead of schedule, and that's the concern of the nearly a thousand people on this coalition that I've created. Homeowners, taxpayers, property owners, small business owners in Pacifica, who want this council to be cautious and to protect their rights and their properties. And when it's necessary, when managed retreat is necessary, they will accept that, but it needs to be done and handled in a way that is thoughtful, and that is planned in advance. I'm asking you, I'm imploring you to please accept. I'm asking you, I'm imploring you to please accept Tom Thompson and Jeff Gueye's redline version, submit that to the coastal commission, and see what you get back, because just as property owners and homeowners are going to want to defend their homes to the very last minute, the coastal commission are very bright, honorable, and dedicated people who want to defend what they do as far as they can. They're going to push as hard as they can this way, and your property owners and your homeowners are going to press as hard as they can this way. And it's up to you guys to defend your homeowners, so please stand up for them.
Regina. Cindy, Joanne Gold, and Sharon Vella.
Hi, I'm Cindy Abbott. On September 17th, the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors unanimously declared it a climate emergency in San Mateo County. Board of Supervisors President Carol Groom stated, "Situated between an eroding coastline and a rising shore, the county of San Mateo must prepare for the effects of climate change that we are already experiencing and know are coming. On September 20th, kids around the world shared their growing and understandable angst that adequate steps are not being taken to minimize the risk of climate change and its resulting impacts such as sea level rise for future generations. It's stunning that here in Pacifica, there's consideration of not using the word hazard and that we have pushback on thinking beyond 20 years into the future, minimizing the crisis that we're facing and reducing to insignificant what we've seen occur before our eyes over the past few decades. Homes tumbling into the sea, apartments having to be removed, sinkholes, trails going down, on and on. Planning and preparation are critical to dealing with natural and man-made emergencies. Hoping for the best can help us maintain the strength to move forward. However, all of us, and particularly you as elected officials, should be ensuring that we're prepared for the worst. We need every tool in the toolbox, including managed retreat, and we need to begin developing strategies for the future now. Civil projects can take decades to plan and implement. Our infrastructure is degrading, and the impact of climate change and the climate crisis is only going to worsen that situation. It's time for courage, not a time to wait, a time to step into the future and face challenges straight on. Our residential community will be in the back of the line if we don't step up with robust plans now that consider every single option, including managed retreat." Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne Gold, Sharon Vella, Robin Runeaus.
Hi, I've already submitted my official comments on the LCP, and I think most of you have heard from me enough to know that I and many of my neighbors are in opposition of the proposed change of the Calson Field to the CRMU, and we've stated our concerns about the potential environmental hazard, coastal act conflicts, and we've put forward a lot of reasonable, what we think are reasonable alternatives to be zoned LIBC. But in all this time, I think we've heard a lot of the same kind of responses from city council and planning commission. You know, number one, Calson has a right to make a profit. Number two, if you don't like it, you should buy the field. And number three, which was in the redline version, is that we should designate it as CRMU because we don't know for sure what hazards will happen, and besides, we'll just let the environmental impacts be evaluated at the project level. So let me respond. Number one, sure, Mr. Calson absolutely has a right to make a profit, and I would never begrudge him that. He also purchased the field in the 90s, knowing full well the legal status in the zoning, and he's had more than 20 years to make a profit from the sale or development of this property, and he's never brought forward a single plan. Nothing has stopped him from doing so. The city has no business making biased land use decisions, however, that put people and property in harm's way in order to help a private land owner increase his property value proposition, period. Number two, I hate to dignify the question of why don't we buy it ourselves with an answer, because it's an insult. It implies overt stereotyping and prejudice, and it suggests that those who live on Pedro Point are entitled to the same public governance and environmental protections as the rest of the Pacifica community. Shame on any of you who've said it or thought it. Number three, allowing for CRMU designation now and counting on the environmental protection being determined at the project level simply kicks the can down the road. Any residential land use opens up the door to put people and property at risk.
Thank you. Sharon Vella.
Thank you.
Robin Runeaus, Bridget Duffy.
Good evening, Sue Vodderlos, mayor, and council members. I'm going to keep this really short and sweet. I showed up this evening because I think it's important to please ask you to remove all references to managed retreat and please submit Jeff Gueye's redline version to the coastal commission. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Robin Runeaus, Bridget Duffy, and then Tom Edmundster, that's the last card I have, so if you'd like to speak, please have your card brought forward.
Good evening, council members. Robin Runeaus, West Sharp Park. I'd like to bring up three major items that I feel really need to be corrected in the LCP. The policies that state maintain 100 feet of beach are unrealistic. Remove Hazard Policy 57, or it's now CR1I546, about restricting existing shoreline protections. This policy contradicts the proposed policies to replace the seawall and close the gap at Clarendon. Three, remove and reject the flawed cost-benefit analysis. Staff argues that it doesn't matter since the city is rejecting managed retreat. Remove it. The entire purpose of the CBA, as was written by ESA, was to show that managed retreat was the least costly alternative. How can that be when ESA failed to value the golf course, endangered species that live there, and tax and property values of all homes and businesses affected? The purpose of the changes we propose is to remove conflicts and ambiguity that will tie up the city and developers with lawsuits for years to come. It must be clear to everyone that the city's intent is to protect Pacifica's residents and businesses. What will happen if residents lose their homes because of managed retreat? Where will they go? All of Pacifica is at risk if we don't make it clear, a clear stand against the coastal commission's overreach. Evictions due to managed retreat are the last thing the city needs. I'd like anybody here in the room who agrees with me to stand up, just like we'd like you to stand up to the coastal commission, please. I urge council to adopt the documents we submit prior to this meeting, which include the redline 26-page document, the bright line statement, the rejection of ESA cost-benefit analysis, and amendments to the LCP for staff to incorporate. Please save our neighborhoods and our city.
Thank you. Please, Bridget Duffy, Tom Edmundster, then Nicole Larson.
Hi, Bridget Duffy, aka Bridget of the Bridge. My superpowers are building bridges and tearing down walls. That's a joke because we're talking, you get it. Anyway, so I just want to make it, I mean, most people in this room have to understand the science at this point. It cannot be unknown to everybody in the room. It's in the news, okay? With their, San Mateo County has declared a climate emergency. I urge the city of Pacifica to declare a climate emergency, because what that means is all expenditures at this point need to be seen through the lens of the climate emergency. The seawall that is being proposed to be built, for one thing, would cost about $200 million. Don't tell me we can't build an electric tram up to Daly City for $200 million. Also, I mean, let's look at the facts. Pacifica is not suffering from flooding. Pacifica is suffering from erosion. If I'm not mistaken, 12 feet a year for the last five years. That's a lot of erosion, and guess what? A wall is not going to stop erosion. And what we're looking at here is the same builders and realtors that want to spend city money to demolish this building, build a new building, and then they will make more money when it is time to demolish those structures because they're going to head into the ocean. This is a rip-off by the real estate community, and anybody who doesn't know that right now needs to look at some facts. Google these facts. These people are lying to you about managed retreat, that it's some kind of evil.
Thank you, Bridget, you're done.
It is not.
Thank you, Bridget. Tom Edmundster, Nicole Larson, and Frank Vella.
City council members, staff, members of the community, I really don't feel great for any of us as we face quality of life issues in this town, dealing with climate change, coastal erosion, and the need to act responsibly on behalf of the quality of life for all who live here, not merely people who own existing property that they'd like to develop. Before the last council race, this sign was prevalent, all right? What it suggested is a denial of climate science. Let's put it off, let's put one label on it. Let's call it managed retreat. Push the fear buttons. Using terms also like "the overreach of the coastal commission" denies actually the authority of the coastal commission in relation to the city, in relation to the coast, as we watch cliff sides go like this. We used to call things like houses falling into the ocean and massive flooding acts of God. We now have things like the Santa Rosa Fire, the Paradise Fire. In 82, there was a massive flood in Lower Lindamar. I drove across a bridge that went out less than 20 minutes later. We're dealing with the climate shifting radically and the need to adequately take care of the existing quality of life in the short, medium, and long run. Not attaching a greater and more accurate cost-benefit analysis of the existing, not merely real estate, but amenities and existing housing is a shortcoming of the existing reports and consultative process.
Thank you, Tom. Nicole Larson, Frank Vella.
I've been monitoring this whole situation from afar, and I just wanted to take a moment to step up and just give you my analysis as a longtime marine biologist and coastal management expert who's lived on the coast and lived in Pacifica and loves Pacifica. I'm in a fortunate place that I'm able to speak to students all over, and I was fortunate enough to be at Terranova this week, where I spoke with the entire freshman class, and no one there even knew that there was a global climate strike or anything about that in our city. But I tell you what, they know now. And I'm here today just to tell you guys something. I know all of us, looking at the reality of this climate change, is hard and scary. However, from a policy perspective, I feel it's imperative that we have every line item possible in our plans in case of the catastrophic emergency. I already know that 100-year storms that were used to be every once in a while are now happening in places every year, and we have no idea what the future holds. Just a chunk of the iceberg as big as Maui broke off just today. Without having managed retreat and all of these things as line items to be looked at for the future, we're cutting ourselves off from critical funding should we have a catastrophic event. I'm begging you not just to think about your own safety, but the future of your grandchildren and your unborn grandchildren who are in the room right now, because their future's at stake. We know very well from the East Coast, looking at hardened shorelines, a professor I studied with, Orin Pilkey, P-I-L-K-E-Y. Hardened structures deprive all natural beaches of sand, increasing erosion. We can't change what's happening, but we can prepare for it by facing reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Vella is the last card I have this time.
Hello, council, Frank Vella, lifelong resident of Lindamar. I encourage the council to adopt the redline version and remove any inference to managed retreat. There's a lot of things that we could do, and just because someone doesn't agree with everything going on doesn't mean that they are against science or don't believe that there's climate change going on. There are certainly things we can do, but we don't need to be over excited about it. As far as the Ron Calson property goes, that is private property, and it also is property that's going to possibly contribute to Pacifica as a whole, not just the local neighborhood there. It affects everybody. I feel that that property and that property owner's been not treated fairly over the There's so much that could be done that would be compatible with existing uses. It's not open space, it's not wetlands, it doesn't have a flooding problem like a lot of people claim it does. Originally, I've seen plans from long ago where it was residential, where Kent Road comes down in the middle of that. Now, certainly doesn't mean that that's what's happened now, but there have been proposals on that property. And for those who say that they made offers on it at the price that it was purchased for 25 years ago is ridiculous. No one would sell their home for what they purchased it for 25 years ago. A compromise should be made, and it should help the entire city. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last card I have. Seeing no one else getting up to speak, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for questions.
I'll start.
Mary.
Christian, can you do us a favor and explain about the cost-benefit analysis and where it resides, and is it going to be with the LCP when it's submitted to the coastal commission?
Sure. I think none of us deny that the cost-benefit analysis was part of the background documents that the city considered in its development of these coastal resilience policies. It's out there, it's been transmitted to the coastal commission and many others, and there's no taking that back at this point. I think what we can do is recognize what its intended purpose was and what its value or utility will be moving forward. As stated earlier, the cost-benefit analysis is not a part of the LCP. It is not attached to the consultation draft. It will not be transmitted again to the coastal commission as part of this document. And in fact, we've indicated that elements of the adaptation plan that are not expressly stated in the consultation draft will not be used for further purposes. I think, should there be lingering concern among the council, it's possible we could offer stronger disclaimer language or maybe highlight that or elevate that point in some way to allay the concerns that the community has identified. But in its simplest form, just for conversation this evening, it's not a part of this consultation draft, it's a background document. It has served its purpose, and any cost-benefit analysis that would be needed in the future to support decision-making of any kind would be a new cost-benefit analysis, or at the very least contain an update to the information that's in the cost-benefit analysis and be made part of a public process to consider that.
And so just to reiterate it, there can be language put into the document that supports what you just said, and then there can be a new cost-benefit analysis in the future.
That's correct. We could quickly work on some language to strengthen the distance that we're putting between that background document and this current LCP that we're hoping to move forward through the approval process. And a cost-benefit analysis is a common part of significant public policy decision-making, and it likely or could be part of a future decision-making process, but it wouldn't be the same cost-benefit analysis. It would have updated information and perhaps other state-of-the-art, you know, analytical framework included in it as well.
Okay, thank you. I have more, but I'm going to wait a minute.
I kind of have, it's along the ESA report lines also. On the staff report on packet page nine, there's the phrase, "However, the maps show important information necessary to make general planning-level decisions about the vulnerability of portions of the coastal." about the vulnerability of portions of the coastal zone to coastal erosion." And we've been told that this, again, just what you told Mary, that it's going to be a background document and not part of the, you know, local coastal plan. So can... One of the concerns is the coastal maps of the vulnerability zones. And then in the next page, you said this, that "The maps allow staff to readily identify areas which are not vulnerable and to allow development in those areas to proceed without further study." So you're... Am I correct in understanding that you will be using those maps in planning-level decisions about projects? Or am I misreading this? Because I read a lot this weekend.
I think you're correct that we will use the maps as we use a variety of hazard maps throughout our city planning documents, things like soil stability and landslide risk, fire risk, tsunami inundation risk, and others. It's a common method of applying high-level assessments of hazard risk and determining which areas have the potential to be subject to risk and which do not. So for the coastal vulnerability zone maps that we've included as an appendix to the consultation draft, they will serve a function to determine which areas are potentially vulnerable to coastal erosion and coastal flooding from sea level rise. For those areas outside of the high-level areas identified, we will not need to further analyze those risks. For areas within them, then we could transition to a site-specific analysis to determine if there is a risk or not based on specific information for that property.
So therefore, based on what you just said, then looking... I can't quite find it right now. But you have the maps from the ESA report. And back in Lindemar, they go all the way back to Peralta. Am I correct, or Peralta? They go all the way back to Peralta. So every home from Peralta West will be affected by those maps? If they want to do a project or improvement or whatever?
So strictly speaking, these hazard policies apply to properties located within the coastal zone. I think the...
The coastal zone or the vulnerability zone?
The policies apply to properties located within the coastal zone, even though some information is shown outside of the coastal zone, because that's what the technical information suggests for the mapping. These policies, if they're adopted as they're written, would not apply to development outside of the coastal zone, strictly speaking, as the policies are applied. Because those areas are subject to hazards, it is possible that through our general plan hazard assessment requirements, that that information could be of use. But strictly speaking, these policies would not affect property outside of the coastal zone.
So then, when Mary asked the question about the economic analysis, if I understood your responses, that we weren't necessarily gonna... That was not gonna be part of the local coastal plan? And a new... A new economic analysis would be done or whatever, or they would not be considered? But you are considering the vulnerability maps, right? Do I have that convoluted, or is it...
No, I think you're trying to say, well, how do we have it both ways? I think what we're telling you is that there was background information that supported decision-making that is no longer relevant. That would be the cost-benefit analysis, and it would not be used for future decision-making. We have plainly said that the hazard, the coastal vulnerability zone maps have an ongoing utility because they reflect hazardous conditions that exist under certain planning assumptions using these models. And they are relevant for application of the transfer of development rights policies to help remove development potential from vulnerable sites, as well as for requiring site-specific hazard analysis studies, for example. So we're plainly disclosing that we intend to continue using the hazard maps. These maps have the potential to be updated and should be updated from time to time as discussed in the policies that we've put forward before you. And so the science on sea level rise and modeling continues to evolve. And periodically, the areas subject to these hazards will change as the maps are updated to use the best available science at that time.
So then, we can be assured that it'll be the policy of the city? And to kind of paraphrase what you're saying, to clarify what I understand, basically, we will be using the same triggers that would modify different actions for sea level rise things? But whether or not we use the vulnerability maps? Did I make it clear?
Well, if I understand the question, I don't know if you're asking, will we have triggers to update the vulnerability zone maps? Or are you referring to the ongoing monitoring requirements?
We're having triggers for the monitoring. Okay, but you're... What you said is the vulnerability maps will be used all the time. And, okay, is it possible to use the vulnerability maps for a project and have them also be triggered by events from the other monitoring?
Well, I think, perhaps other staff can chime in. I think it's a... We're talking about two different things. So we have a planning-level hazard map based on the modeling of our coastline, which we're using for transfer of development rights purposes, as well as to determine whether further study of hazards is required to allow development to proceed.
Right.
The monitoring requirements most typically are associated with shoreline protection. And the owners of that shoreline protection, whether it be the city or a private property owner, if that's the direct shoreline development being protected. And so there are ongoing monitoring requirements for those owners of that shoreline protection to determine whether it's in good condition and can continue to safely protect the site, as well as whether conditions warrant considering removal of that shoreline protection.
But wouldn't triggers for shoreline hazard mitigation, wouldn't that have an effect on the vulnerability zone?
Well, I think to the extent that shoreline protection is added or removed, it could change what the maps demonstrate. So I think we've plainly disclosed that these maps do not reflect the effect of existing shoreline protection. We expect that the next iteration of these maps will. And as that shoreline protection is modified, expanded, removed, whatever the case may be in the future, and the maps are then updated, the maps will necessarily change again. So the maps are not forever as they are now. They will change as the conditions change and the science related to modeling changes as well.
Thank you.
Sue, can I add a... I have a follow-on question to that point about maps. And this plan in general. So the maps as an attachment to this plan. What is the useful life of this plan? What is our anticipated useful life?
I think we expect that this is a twenty-year plan to align with the planning horizon of the general plan. So 2040 is the planning period for this plan.
Okay. And it looks like in my read of the... Some aspects of the vulnerability assessment that we did in preparation for this plan, we were doing assessments for fifty years, twenty... For the years 2050 and 2100. And so the maps that Mike's referring to, what is the assumption on those maps? Is that the 2100 level?
Yeah, it's the 2100 scenario with 5.7 feet of sea level rise.
I would like to propose that we consider reducing that set of maps that we attach to this document. If we anticipate that the plan is going to be twenty-year lifespan, and we're using maps that reference 2100, it seems to me that we are creating a case that may be unnecessary and put us into a position that we don't need to be in.
Sure. I think part of staff's concern with reducing the projection period for these hazard maps is that very little development has a twenty-year economic life. And so we're making decisions now as a city to permit or not to permit development which may be there sixty, seventy, eighty, or a hundred years or more. And so to not make use of the best available science for long-term projections, which has the greatest overlap, if you will, with the economic life of development that we would be approving, we think that's a disservice to the community as to the disclosure of what those potential hazards are and whether that development is likely to succumb to coastal hazards like sea level rise, flooding, and erosion over the life of that development. So I think we feel strongly as a staff that it is important to keep that long-term planning horizon, even though it does extend well beyond the twenty-year term of the rest of the policies that we have.
What I heard you say just now was that you and... You're making planning decisions, and I recognize that you are, that last long into the future for permitting new construction. But the maps, if I'm not mistaken, are pertaining to all existing structures as well, because it's referencing all of Pacifica. Am I correct?
Well, certainly, the maps are for our entire coastal zone, and they affect areas that are developed with existing structures, as well as areas that are undeveloped currently and which may develop at some point in the future.
So is there any scenario under which we could either have a... I don't want to say disclaimer, an explanation of the purpose of the maps in terms of what you just described? The long planning horizon, et cetera? I think the concerns, and why I'm asking these questions, it has to do with the concerns that have been raised about insurance, the impacts on hazard insurance for existing homeowners when the city is considering a document that shows inundation maps and doesn't have an explanation as to... Or maybe not robust enough explanation as to how those maps shouldn't be considered right now for insurance purposes, say. You referenced that they don't take into account existing shoreline protections. Yet, homes are protected by those shoreline protections. And so I think what I'm trying to get to here is, how can we define some of these? Separate these things in our plan so that we're not painting everything with the same brush?
Sure. I think similar to, you know, the ongoing use of the cost-benefit analysis, we could work on language to explain what the maps say and what can be done if there's concern about their suggested conclusions, such as conducting a site-specific analysis to determine if there may be shoreline protection or other topographic, geologic, or other considerations that would allow you to pull yourself out of this. So similar to folks that have property located within a flood zone, they can do certain site-specific studies to conclude that, you know, that high-level planning document for the flood zone, in fact, is not appropriate for their property. I think a similar approach could be used here to conclude, my property is not subject to those hazards. And so we can work on language that hopefully would reflect that, to make it clear the intended purpose. I think an important message, though, from staff is that changing the planning term or removing the maps or other steps, that's not going to eliminate the hazard, I think. We recognize the best available science suggests a certain outcome over the long term. And so we need to do our best to disclose that and to plan for that.
Understood. And I think that this is where we, you know, this is where those two areas of consideration, many people in the audience speaking tonight brought it up. Science is evolving. We're receiving new reports daily and weekly. So how we keep abreast of that, I think, is what I'm concerned about. And making sure that whatever we've identified at the time that we prepared this document for the purposes of long-range planning isn't used out of context. And I wanted to make sure that we have availed ourselves of all options with the maps.
Yeah, I think certainly we don't want the maps to be misused. We want their purpose and their application to be clear. And if that's not clear for the council or others attempting to use the maps and rely upon them, we want to do what we can to make that clear. And so if given the opportunity of a few moments, I think that we could try to put together some proposal language when the opportunity is right and see if that would meet the council's needs.
Thank you.
If I may add to that, because it's relevant to the conversation, the vulnerability maps, as they are in the draft, have a disclaimer. And I'll read it.
Could you please?
It's in small print.
Yeah, the binder that I have doesn't have the maps actually in it, so I was trying to look for that. Thank you.
Yeah, it says, "This map is not detailed to the parcel scale and should not be used for navigation permitting, regulatory, or other legal uses. The erosion scenario does not account for shoreline protection. Coastal vulnerability projections were sourced from publicly available data and existing models not created by the city of Pacifica." So there's that disclaimer already in there. Another point that I wanted to make, and perhaps I can have Senior Planner Murdoch or Director Waremeister elaborate on, is without the use of maps in the planning process, what... How does the planning process proceed? And I'll simply say that any project that comes in, in the coastal zone, would then be asked to do site-specific analysis. And the cost related to that would need to be borne by the applicant. What the planning maps achieve, I mean, the vulnerability maps achieve, is guidance about when a property may or may not be close to that vulnerability hazard. And as Planner Murdoch mentioned, you know, the existence of the maps or not, the hazards still exist. And there's publicly sourced information out there that an applicant can use in a site-specific analysis or that, you know, would need to be brought up in that evaluation. So again, it's a planning tool, and it's an important planning tool to make the city's, you know, planning review process efficient and effective.
Understood. I think what I'm concerned about is economic value and making sure that while we're looking forward, as you just described, for planning purposes, that we're not inadvertently undercutting the existing property owners, homeowners, investments that we, the city itself, has made, that we are continuing to protect by showing maps that imply we're not doing those things. I think that's what I'm concerned about. I'm trying to figure out, where in this document are we clarifying that specifically? So maybe you can ponder that. I know other council members have questions. But if you can help me zero in on that, or if it doesn't exist or maybe isn't strong enough, suggest where that might be inserted.
Okay. Deirdre?
Do you have any comment on that?
I was just gonna add that we are drafting some language for your consideration at the end of your deliberation.
I actually think that disclaimer is good enough, which is kind of what I was gonna say. But I don't see why there's any other explanation. I mean, if you're gonna go so far as to clarify additionally, we're completely rejecting everything we've heard tonight, which is the confusion of all of these drafts and documents and references.
Yeah, what I might add is, for the existing disclaimer, we could consider, this would be one option for the council to consider, is adding in to that list of navigation permitting, regulatory, or other legal uses, adding in real estate uses or real estate transactions or insurance purposes. Could add those two, you know, real estate and/or insurance purposes.
I would defer to council on what your thoughts are and how best to achieve what I was speaking of.
Yeah. I agree that creating the best disclaimer language is the way to go with addressing your issues with the vulnerability maps. I don't... I think the city, who are the people who are attaching these maps to its plan, can include whatever disclaimers they choose to use to describe what they see as the usefulness of these maps. So I don't have... I would not have any concerns with including real estate and insurance as part of that list.
Thank you.
Could we maybe change it to loan or insurance? I don't know, financing. I just loan, because you can't get a loan unless you have insurance.
All right.
You know, so... And if someone wants to refinance, it's more of a loan than a, you know...
Would it not be a real estate transaction?
Well, yeah, but the real estate sounds more like buy and sell versus loan. Could be a refi or a reverse mortgage or whatever. And I also think these vulnerability maps have not been reviewed by... have not been reviewed by FEMA, correct? Or have they been?
No, they're separate from the FEMA maps.
Okay.
I thought they were, I just wanted to say.
Mary?
Okay, this is a kind of separate topic, but, so we know that the environment is changing, like, faster than we can wrap our heads around. And so what I would like to know is, how often are things going to be monitored? And if there's a plan, if the plan is for 20 years, how often will the policies be revisited? Or can they be revisited if something happens that we're not expecting?
Oh, would you like, okay. So we do have a policy that directs staff to reevaluate the adaptation plan, which puts us going through this process when, every five years, or when determined necessary, based on another monitoring plan, which will stop those triggers. So at least every five years, a new adaptation plan will be prepared, and then council at that time can determine if they want to amend any of the coastal resilience policies to incorporate those.
Okay, thank you, Bonnie.
Deirdre?
So just to follow up on that, there was a comment from someone tonight about just that question. If there's anything that comes up that we would like to reconsider for amendment, does it have to go through a full review, again?
Yes, it would be an LCP amendment, so council would have to approve it, and then it would go to Coastal Commission for certification.
Oh, it would have to go back to Coastal. So is that a standard operating procedure in terms of local coastal planning?
It is. It's a standard procedure for most city planning purposes, to have to make the city council approve those kinds of changes to the legislative documents, like the general plan, or the local coastal program. The important element here is that, for the LCP to be valid, the Coastal Commission has to certify its contents.
Right. So if we were talking general plan, that wouldn't be a big deal, but if, because it's local coastal plan, and it's, and we have to go to Coastal Commission?
It adds time, and it adds the uncertainty of an outside agency offering comments and having different opinions potentially, but there's no way to avoid that, unfortunately. But I just wanted to add to the question of updating in response to changing considerations that Councilmember Beer mentioned. Yes, as Ms. O'Connor mentioned, we have certain timelines that are expressed in these policies for known conditions now, right? We're anticipating evolving science and conditions, so let's periodically update. Nothing prevents the council, in response to extraordinary or unknown circumstances, from exercising its legislative authority to initiate other changes and amendments to the LCP to respond to those conditions, whether it's sea level rise, or other hazards, or other conditions that evolve in the coastal zone. That's the council's job, to enact legislative policies that reflect the needs of the community in response to changing conditions.
I appreciate that, because we've heard, we want to be thoughtful and careful, and I think that that is doing so. So, thanks.
There's one. On page one, I ran across, I didn't know what this was, the city's certified implementation plan dates to June 1994. What is the implementation plan?
So the implementation plan is the term used in the Coastal Act for, really, in effect, the city's zoning ordinances, which implement the local coastal program. So under the Coastal Act context, cities have a local coastal land use plan, LCLUP, and they have an implementation plan. Those two together are called the local coastal program. For simplicity, we are referring to this process as the LCP update. It is an LCP update, it's updating a part of our LCP. To implement the land use plan component, however, we will follow on after adoption and certification of this document, with a whole host of zoning changes to implement the policies. That will be an update to our implementation plan.
Okay, thanks.
In two sections of this document, there are items that refer back to the ESA document, which have been changed, and one of them says that legally permitted shoreline protection structures may be repaired and maintained. So that's an item that comes up frequently. Also, under new shoreline structures, this is crossed out, this is not part of it, but for purposes of this policy, existing principal structures means principal structures that were legally authorized prior to January 1977. That was a huge issue in number 57, which is now I-557, and that has been completely struck from this document, which is a really important item.
Yeah, and thank you for stating where it was, because that'll be helpful when people are listening, to say, like, this is where I'm seeing it.
Back at page 218.
Yeah, because I think there might be some confusion about what, which red line document we're talking about, and we're talking about this consultation document.
Yeah.
So... This was an extremely hard week. We had 996 pages, plus constant emails.
Of Fogfest.
What?
I don't think that's correct.
And Fogfest.
I was going to say, I don't think
No.
Oh.
No.
It is.
It is, though. Sorry. No.
Um, yes, please.
Okay.
So... Changing the word hazard to coastal resiliency, that's all we did? I'm an optimist, so I tend to try to use more positive words, and I feel like resiliency comes across as better, so I do support that. I also have been known to not agree with property owners building on the coast, for very obvious reasons. I don't think we need to get into it. I voted no on the Beach Boulevard project here, and I think as a council member, one of our top priorities is the health and safety of our community, and putting a property on Beach Boulevard that gets inundated every single year, not just in the winter, was a really bad idea. So I think the people who buy that property will, those properties will figure that out the first year they move in. In the same vein, I feel the same way, unfortunately, about the Calson Field. I wished you had built sooner. Unfortunately, I'm not in favor of changing this designation to CRMU. I think that it should be low-intensity visitor-serving, and that's how I feel, that's how a lot of the community feels, and we disagree. And I'm sure not a lot of people up here agree with me either. But I also think that not a lot of people up here agree with the same science that I believe. So I just want to state that for the record, that the same science that says, you know, a sheet of vice the size of Maui broke off today, you know, we're telling people not to use hazard maps based out, you know, in 2100. I say, we, those numbers are going to be higher. We're going to have higher levels of sea level rise, and unfortunately, it's probably not going to be you who has to deal with it, it's going to be your grandkids. So while you're saying that you're here for your grandkids, I actually don't believe that. My parents' house was destroyed in Superstorm Sandy, they're on a coastal island off of New Jersey. And they were allowed to rebuild 13 feet above sea level, when every full moon, they can kayak through the streets of their town. It's scary. Who's going to be saddled with that? It's going to be me. It's going to be me, and my sisters and my brothers. And so we're the ones that are going to be at a loss. Not them, because they're going to be gone. So I do not advise building in the coastal hazard zone. I think the maps are good. A friend of mine lives in Lindemar, she's just outside of the lines there that designate it as a hazardous area, so she decided by flood insurance. Hurrah, hurrah. Just like when I moved here, I didn't know anything about earthquakes, so I figured we need to get earthquake insurance. I was listening to a talk show, and there was a woman named Bina Van Kaderaman, who wrote a book called The Optimist Telescope, and I only just started reading it. But it starts off the first few pages, she's describing a hike that she used to go on all the time in upstate New York, and she was very, you know, high-powered, high-stress job, doing White House stuff. And she got a little bite on her leg, and, you know, it swelled up for a couple days, but it went away eventually, and she kept on going, and two months later, she ended up in the hospital. And with full-blown Lyme disease, two months of antibiotics, and permanent damage to her legs, to her leg. So what do you think's going through her head? Why didn't I listen to the warning signs? Why didn't I get my butt to the hospital when I saw that bite? I've done this a million times. I know this is a high-tick, high Lyme disease. Why didn't I go? So I'm asking everyone here, who is not in favor of planning or thinking ahead, to think about that scenario. And I hope that you don't kick yourselves in the butt, and I certainly hope that your kids and your grandkids don't kick themselves in the butt and curse you for not planning for their future. So I do not agree with removing the words managed retreat anywhere, and I know that's not suggested. But I do believe that we, I want to thank Cliff Lawrence for bringing up some really important words, you know. It's super inconvenient. It's super inconvenient that we have to think about this now. But if you think about all the things that our kids are going into right now for, in college, it's all to protect our future. So we should be doing everything that we can to put health and sustainment of us, of the human race, over money. And that's sort of where I am with this tonight. I'm not going to vote down the entire LCP because of one land use designation, unfortunately, but I want it noted for the record that I don't agree with that. I would like the, you know, low-intensity visitor-serving at the Calson Field site. I'm not in favor, I'm in favor of planning, planning for our future, and however you want to call that, please go ahead. But let's be smart. Thanks. Mary?
I have some little things. On packet page 33 in the background, it talks about the Portola expedition, but it doesn't mention anything about the Aloney people that were already here. So I know I'm, like, nitpicking, but is it possible to add something about the native people that were here? I would appreciate that. And then, on packet page 98, PR 139, it mentions the Rockaway Headlands, and I think we had talked about not having any development on there the last time we met. Didn't we say something about that?
Well, I think some public commenters suggested that would be appropriate. The Rockaway Headlands is in private ownership, and so depriving them of all economic
Right.
...development potential would not be recommended by staff.
Okay.
It's confusing. The area from the highway up just beyond the trail is Caltrans right-of-way.
Okay.
But the bulk of that to the coast is private property.
Okay, thank you. Again, on page, packet page 119, we're talking about transit. Are we going to be adding in, like, the new senior program, or the on-demand SAMTrans program?
We can take a look at that to make sure it reflects the appropriate transit information.
Okay, thank you. And then, where's the last one? Here it is. Packet page 211, when it's talking about the Sharp Park Golf Course in CR 123, it says, "Encourage the city and county of San Francisco to maintain the Sharp Park Golf Course berm." Can it be more than encourage? Can we have, like, a contract, or an MOU, or something written with them, that they are going to maintain it?
Well, can we?
Or can it only be encouraging? Do you see, the language seems weak to me, but...
Well, so San Francisco owns that, and it's under regulatory authority to the Coastal Commission.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
I think before you were on council, the Coastal Commission ordered San Francisco to maintain it.
Oh, okay.
The only issue would be if we could ask San Francisco to connect the southern part to Maury Point. That's the only part, I think, right? That's the issue, yeah.
Well, closing that...
Yeah, we do have language in the policies regarding closing the gap between the southern end of the seawall and the levee. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. But, I mean, if the council has a suggested word instead of
I do.
Encourage.
And to what Councilmember O'Neill just said, is there a way to reference that decision? Or is that getting a little bit too nitpicky, too specific? Because it is mandated...
It says coastal development permit.
It is referenced in Section 6.
So in that, but in that section that Councilmember Beer is referring to, could it not be stated there as well?
No.
Right? Instead of just the word encourage, you know, like, another phrase?
It actually, I'm sorry, it does stay, it says issued by the California Coastal Commission. I just didn't know what that was.
Yeah, actually, encourage does sound kind of weeny. Maybe something a little stronger, like, follow, or monitor that the city, monitor the requirement of the Coastal Commission per coastal development permit, da-da-da, for the city and county of San Francisco to maintain the beer.
Or the city and county of San Francisco shall maintain.
Yeah, that's good.
Simple.
Yeah. Well, again, we don't have that authority to say shall maintain, because it's not
Consistent with
Or monitor.
The coastal development permit, and issued by the California Coastal Commission.
So my, the only thing that's giving me pause here is that, you know, there are provisions of that Coastal Commission approval that says, you know, you come back and get re-reviewed in five years. The Coastal Commission does something different. I'm concerned about the city's policy being, be consistent with the Coastal Commission approval, in case that changes in the future. What I might suggest is that you direct staff to take the, I understand what you're saying, that you want to support the requirements of the Coastal Commission to maintain and protect that berm, and that take those sections and more strongly word that.
Yes.
I'm concerned about just referencing the Coastal Commission's actions.
Okay, okay.
Mary?
Well, I'll just say a couple more things, and then I'll be quiet. I just want people to understand that you guys have been heard, and that this document reflects a lot of the changes that you've requested. And so I really want to thank our city staff for listening and for doing that. I also want to say, in the same way, that I think our community should be heard from the folks that are coming to us from Pedro Point, and so that is where I stand on that issue. I think that it's important for us to listen to our whole community as well. I'm not going to not vote on this, on the whole LCP because of that, but I did want to have that in the record, too.
Okay.
Sue Beer, sue that, Mary.
I have a comment to make. In general, when you're sitting in this chair, the idea is, if you're not upsetting somebody, you're not doing your job. And truly, sitting in this chair tonight, I was hearing the same words come out of very different points of view, but the same words were coming out of people's mouths. And in the implication, the other side doesn't think this way. And I'm sitting here going, that's what they said. Yeah, that's what they said. And so my takeaway, I said this to Mike just before we sat down, is while I don't look forward to making people unhappy, you know, I said to him, well, if you're doing your job, you know you're doing your job if somebody's unhappy. If everybody's unhappy, you're really doing a good job. And so I'm concerned that, you know, to Mary's point about, you've been heard, unless, I get the feedback that unless 100% of a point of view is put in, you haven't been hurt. And I just want to remind everyone that we are a community, that we have to all exist together. We are a large community of nearly 40,000 We are a large community of nearly 40,000 people. And no way 40,000 people come to this meeting, understood. It's clear that the folks who come and who contact us and who email and who write are representing others who hold that same point of view. It's really important for you to understand that we are taking all of that in and that staff has incorporated what has been stated. Nobody's going to get 100%. It's just, I'm just going to say it like that because that's the truth. And we've just got to live with that. And we've got to move forward together. That's it. So I know it kind of sounds preachy, but I just want you to know what I'm thinking. In case, you know, you were wondering. Thanks.
I had a question and a couple of questions in regards to monitoring on packet page 206, 207. We have CR 1-4, monitoring shoreline change. How is that going to be? Is there going to be some sort of electronic device that you think that keeps monitoring? Is it a monitoring system that's yet to be developed? You know, and then you also, because if you look at CR on 207, CR 1-12, the high-water program, the city will research and evaluate feasible new funding mechanisms to implement a program to record high-water marks where feasible. So I'm just, do we have any idea, is there now a service that we, that does that? Or is it going to be a city employee doing it? You know what I mean? Just general questions about that.
I think sea level rise in general, there are folks monitoring that. There's buoys out, you know, in the Pacific Ocean that we can, we can rely on. For the specific factors related to our city, bluff monitoring, shoreline width, et cetera, I think we would be looking at probably a consulting engineering firm that would be helping, you know, expertise in that area that would be assisting us with that. And I would certainly, you know, go through their, our Public Works Department and determine, you know, whether or not they, they would be doing that in-house or they'd be contracting. I would imagine they'd be contracting for specialized expertise.
Then on, let's see, CR-1, packet page 209, it references 100-foot beaches.
Oh, thank you.
And I mean, it does, and it does that throughout the document. That's just an example. I mean, there's many beaches in Pacifica that, especially like along the promenade, up by Dollar Radio and maybe Pedro Point, Rockaway, that we do not have 100-foot beach right now.
Right.
So how is that going to be handled?
So you'll see that in the, in the particular page that you referenced. It's under a policy related to beach nourishment. And so the goal is to have at least 100 feet in width on average. And we would be accomplishing that or trying to accomplish that via beach nourishment, which is adding sand, so making the beach wider seaward, not, not going landward, I guess, backwards, if that makes any sense.
Okay. And then we'd maybe put in some, I know in the bay side, they're using some plants, wetland plants to kind of like soften the wave action. Is that something we could do on the ocean side? Or do you know?
That, that's dune restoration. That's not specifically called out.
Okay. That was a question I had about that. There was another on packet page, my notes are on one thing because I started reading early and now I have to find it here. Packet page 215, assumption of risk by private landowners. I can understand the rationale behind it and everything, but I, okay, in a deed restriction requiring the owner to indemnify and hold the city harmless. But I actually did talk to a couple of people, and there's no financial instrument that they can actually purchase to hold the city harmless at this time. So do we have any idea that, how that will be accomplished if someone wants to build Well, if you go back to the residential building guidelines from last year, they had a provision in there that if you build something beyond, I forget the exact verbiage, beyond a certain, in the coastal zone, you would have to post a bond so that the city would be, would be indemnified to be able to tear the building down and/or move it somewhere else. But when I spoke to several people, there was no financial instrument designed yet that would do that. So we have this provision in here. I can see putting the deed restriction in. I don't really have a problem with that.
Can you, can you tell me where?
Packet page 215.
What CR 1?
Oh, CR 1-44.
So if I'm understanding the question, Councilmember O'Neill, are you asking what, what is the mechanism that we would use to implement?
Right. You're asking, okay, permit approval of development on the shoreline shall require the applicant to record a deed restriction. I have no problem with that. Requiring the owner to indemnify and hold the city harmless and make other acknowledgements relating to the risks relating to the property. Well, in order to hold the city harmless, there would have to be some sort of financial instrument to, no?
No, no. It would just be a condition of approval that would, similar to what we have now, that if we are sued for any reason based on the issuance of that permit, that the developer would defend us and pay for costs of our defense of that suit.
Okay. Then that's not the way I read it.
Is that what whole harmless means in this context?
Yes. Legally.
Right. But then if you go back to what the Coastal Committee, I know we're not talking about the residential building guidelines, but if you go back to what they were doing there, there it actually, the Coastal Commission clearly stated, you shall post a bond to indemnify and hold the city harmless. So could that be construed as posting a bond and holding the city harmless if they related to another?
Could the language in CR?
Dash 1-44.
No.
It's very similar to the residential building guidelines.
No, no.
No?
No. We would not be requesting that they post a bond to hold us harmless, harmless, based on CR 1-44.
Okay. You're a good lawyer, so I'll trust you. Let's see. I'm just going through the pages. Okay. And I think that's it for me.
Sue. Do you have more? Oh, no, that was from before.
I agree with Sue Beckmeyer. This is one of the hardest days that we've had. A lot of people are not going to be happy. People on both sides are not going to be happy. We were called ignorant. We were called non-concerning, said things that were just not true over and over and over. If we suggested that maybe the people on Pedro Point wanted to purchase the land, then what were we called? Ridiculous. It's a homeowner's property. I understand you have one way in, one way out. So does Rockaway, so does Valamar. And a lot of the places in this town have one way in and one way out. I don't think that's relevant. There were a lot of things brought up that were actually not true at all, that it's in a flood zone, that it's protected, wildland area. It's not. And, and that went on and on and on. And I appreciate the passion of everybody because everyone who lives in Pacifica is passionate, one way or the other. And everybody wants what they want. And the comment I've heard many times was, oh, yes, we want housing, but don't put it near me. And I've heard that for the last 30 years. The new numbers, the regional, national numbers are going to come out. Supposedly, they're much worse than they were before. And we, they had no teeth to them.
Worse meaning what? Explain that.
Oh, worse.
Just so everybody knows.
Right now, there are 431 houses for the last five years.
413.
13. Dyslexia.
When you say worse, you mean?
So 413 houses, of which we've built 36. We have about 36 in the pipeline. That's a rough number. The numbers are going to be increased. What we were told the other day was maybe 25% increase in those numbers. What I was starting to say was there was no teeth in it before, and it didn't really matter. None of the numbers carry over. But the new numbers, they will have teeth to them. We will not be getting federal funds if we don't build our housing. That's a, that's a threat that we got already. Who knows what's really going to happen? But we have such a lack of housing compared to jobs. I know in Pacifica, we don't create jobs, but the people who live here go to jobs. They have to have places to live. There are not places to live. And fine to say not in my backyard, put them somewhere else. But I've heard that over and over and over, too. So they, people have to live somewhere. That's it.
I'm done.
If I may, before my battery runs down, read the disclaimer language into the record.
Can I do that? Because I've sort of, I've made edits.
Okay.
So we're thinking of adding to page 6-11.
Page or number, or?
I, you know, I have, I don't have the packet number, I'm sorry, of the LCLUP.
In the way in the back.
At end of that second paragraph.
Packet page 204.
At the end of the second paragraph, insert the following. The cost-benefit analysis section of the sea level rise adaptation plan is not adopted or approved by the City of Pacifica. The purpose of the cost-benefit analysis was to provide information regarding various sea level rise scenarios and adaptation options and not intended to prescribe specific adaptation policies. The cost-benefit analysis shall not be used for any future purpose by the City of Pacifica or its planning processes, including implementation of the local coastal program, public infrastructure investment, permitting, or other regulatory purposes. And for purposes of the vulnerability maps, we would suggest that on page 69, at the end of the first paragraph.
Packet page 202.
We include the following language. The coastal vulnerability area maps utilize the best available data at the time of preparation. The erosion scenario does not account for shoreline protection. This information is continually evolving, and the maps reflect a long planning horizon, recognizing typical design life of structures. Updated models and site-specific analysis may identify that the respective coastal vulnerability does not apply to the designated area. Vulnerability maps are not detailed to the parcel scale and should not be used for real estate financing or insurance transactions or other uses such as navigation, permitting, or regulatory uses. Further studies should be performed for coastal vulnerability areas to confirm vulnerability potential. Coastal vulnerability projections were sourced from publicly available data and existing models not created by the City of Pacifica. And I would also ask that on the disclaimer on the map itself, that we modify that language to reflect the last sentence, last couple of sentences to relate. Vulnerability maps are not detailed to the parcel scale and should not be used for real estate financing or insurance transactions or other uses such as navigation permitting or regulatory uses.
I have a question. Can you read that sentence again where it says does not apply?
For the cost benefit?
It was the second. It was underneath the, yeah, page 202.
Maps. For the maps?
Yeah. There was a sentence in there that it does.
Yeah. Updated models and site-specific analysis may identify that the respective coastal vulnerability does not apply to the designated area.
Okay. So my question about that sentence is actually, should we include the opposite as well? Because while it may not apply to areas, what we're hearing every day is that it actually may apply to more areas. So if we're going to say something may, may not apply, shouldn't we also say that it may also apply to three blocks over?
I think that's up to the council as to whether or not you, you feel that that is something that you also want to highlight.
However, you're the city attorney, and I'm not trying to challenge you. I'm, but I guess I am. In terms of what is, you want us to have a disclaimer, or you had agreed that it was a good thing to have a disclaimer. So from a protection standpoint, doesn't it make sense to give us the fullest protection?
If I may, if I'm understanding you correctly, and one way to read it, but we can try to clarify, is if, if we're saying updated models and site-specific analysis may identify that the respective coastal vulnerability doesn't apply to that designated area, the opposite of that is implied. It's just saying that the updates may not apply, but they may also.
Yeah, but it's not saying it, just like everybody, well, just like other people wanted to say that.
Let's put the whole town in there.
I mean, almost is what you just said, Kevin, was like, the opposite may also be true.
May or may not.
Yes.
May or may not identify. It's just saying that.
But, but it's, it's also inclusive of, it, it needs to identify that it could be inclusive of something that's not included there. You know, two, two blocks over, you know?
Part of the issue is that we need these maps to have some degree of reliability, and we think that we achieve that by applying the best available science. And so granted, the science is changing, and it may include or exclude different areas over time. But if, are you suggesting that we should disclaim that there may be more areas than the best available science currently predicts would be subject to the hazard?
Yes, because I think what I'm hearing tonight is that, that best available sci, that, this isn't going to come out right, but maybe some council members believe that best available science is actually incorrect and it could be lower, where I believe the opposite is true, that best available science, actually, the prediction's probably higher. So I think we have a fundamental disagreement in a general term up here as to what best available science is. We had this discussion a little bit earlier, just about what is science and stuff.
I see. I think I would imagine a scenario where the best available science could include more areas in the future, or it could include fewer areas or different areas. And so if that's not clear in the disclaimer, perhaps we should take another look and see if we could make the phrasing clearer. I think we just want to make sure that we don't throw the validity of the maps entirely into question. We're saying that they're the, based on the best available science, and that could change. But to suggest more or different areas based on the best available science might be affected, I think, is not something that we're seeking to suggest.
Here's a stab at it. Updated models and site-specific analysis may identify that the respective coastal vulnerability depictions will have shifted to include more or less areas.
I like that. Sorry if you feel that it's watered down.
Yes, may have shifted.
How can we do better than the best available science? That's what, that's what they're saying. Best available science. So that's what it's based on.
Right. But this is a disclaimer that is essentially trying to state that.
It may be more, it may be less.
Right. I mean, I think, I think that's the point that's raised by Councilmember Martin, and I think it's a good point. I think that indicating that indicating that it could include more or less area sort of solves the, the issue that's been raised.
Yeah, I think, I think it's great and also that you've already included the, the part about, you know, real estate or?
Right.
So you got it all covered. It's great.
Can you read the whole statement one more time?
For the vulnerability maps, it would read as follows. The coastal vulnerability area maps utilize the best available data at the time of preparation. The erosion scenario does not account for shoreline protection. This information is continually evolving and the maps reflect a long planning horizon, recognizing typical design life of structures. Updated models and site-specific analysis may identify that the respective coastal vulnerability area may have shifted to include more or less areas.
Would it be, oh, sorry. Could we insert the word existing shoreline protection?
Yes. That's a good suggestion, too. I don't know who made that suggestion, but that was a good one. Do you want me to read it again?
Sure.
The coastal vulnerability area maps utilize the best available data at the time of preparation. The erosion scenario does not account for existing shoreline protection. This information is continually evolving and the maps reflect a long planning horizon, recognizing typical design life of structures. Updated models and site-specific analysis may identify that the respective coastal vulnerability areas may have shifted to include more or less area. Vulnerability maps are not detailed to the parcel scale and should not be used for real estate financing or insurance transactions or other uses such as navigation permitting or regulatory uses. Further studies should be performed for coastal vulnerability areas to confirm vulnerability potential. Coastal vulnerability projections were sourced from publicly available data and existing models not created by the City of Pacifica. And, and that whole language is going to go in at page 69, at the end of the first paragraph, and then a portion of that relating to parcel scale is going to be included in the map itself, the maps themselves.
No other comments? Are we ready to make a motion?
I just want to, actually, I did forget to mention this, but it's that GGNRA came out with a new compendium and they are encouraging the, their trails to include e-bikes access. So my recommendation was that we, because our trails map to theirs in some cases, we work to do that, too, and, and work that into our update. So if it needs to be mentioned at all in the local coastal plan, that we do that. And I don't think there was any objection. I'm not making the motion for this one.
Well, I don't know if we're really making a motion because it's a study session.
No.
No, it's a special meeting.
Oh, special meeting, oh, okay.
It's a special meeting and we are making a motion.
So the motion, the only, the motion I see on the agenda is proposed action, provide input on the local coastal program consultant consultation draft and direct the city manager to submit the consultation draft to the coastal commission staff for review.
As modified.
As modified.
By the city attorney.
By the city attorney.
By the city attorney.
And is there a second?
I second.
And everyone, please vote. And that passes five to zero. And the meeting is done.